I'm gonna call this meeting into order. We can have approval or amend the June 5th board agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the June 5th, 2024 board meeting agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
If we could all stand for the clergy of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Communications, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, so we have several students and staff to recognize tonight, so we'll go ahead and get started on that. We're about to get tangled up in cables here. All right, so first, we're gonna recognize our governor scholar program. So I'm not sure who's here and who isn't because of our change of date, but some people had commitments. But Will Blake? Okay. Jackson Hibbert? All right. Grace Mattingly? All right, well, come on up here, Grace. Congratulations. He just wants to stay up here and get a picture of all of you all. Miranda Buckler? All right. Carly Spalding? Emily Mattingly? I think Emily's here, yeah, there she is. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Jaclyn Farmer? Is Jaclyn here? No, I remember she's not gonna be here. Grayson Mattingly? Congratulations. And then I don't think he's here, but Tim Harden. All right, well, congratulations to all of our governor scholar programs. And we previously mentioned this, but it's the most, I believe, we've ever had, so awesome. Good that you're all part of that, so thank you for being here tonight. Next, we'll recognize our governor's school for entrepreneurs. Andrew Mattingly and Makayla Dargery. Thank you. And then our Murray State Commonwealth Honors Summer Academy. We have Marissa...I'm not sure how to pronounce that last name. Barrow? Okay. Barley, okay. Is she here? No, okay. All right. And then the following students were recognized for WKU for Outstanding Achievement on Above-Level Testing. And I see Ms. Van Wais back there. Would you like to say anything about that? Because I know you were a big part of that. I put her on spot.
Just explain what it is?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so seventh graders are able to join the...it used to be Duke Tipp, and now it's Tipp, Kentucky, and it's through WKU. And they are given a voucher to take the ACT. And when they take the ACT, if they meet a benchmark requirement that a high schooler makes, then they are recognized. And so we have several students who are recognized for their high-level achievement, meeting benchmarks on their ACT. And we have...
Yeah, all right.
We have Maddox Clark. Grayson Hamilton. Dylan Robbins. Bryce Cecil as well. Bryce...oh, Bryce was going to the county fair, so Bryce couldn't be here. And then we also...Tanner Reed, who used to be in our school system, but was raised in our school system. He also was recognized. He started sixth grade at the middle school in Marion County and then transferred out. But because he started in our county, I was able to monitor his progress and then submit him as part of the program. And so he was able to take the ACT through that program. We also have several sixth graders who took an IXL test, and that's a mini version of the ACT. And they performed at the 96 percentile as a sixth grader, 96 or higher, as a sixth grader taking an eighth-grade level test. And we have Raiden Violet. And Ava Downs. We have Abby White. Carter Spalding. We also have Harley Quanch Clark, but she was not able to come tonight. So she achieved a high-level benchmark on her ACT, so.
Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll do staff recognition next. So we have several retirees. Ms. Deanna Barden. I still wish she could reconsider, but Ms. Barden and I were at Marion Middle together two years ago. Congratulations. John Buckman, who I don't believe is here. Barbara Courright. Louise D. Debbie Dargery, I saw her somewhere. Congratulations. I don't wanna break this, they're really nice.
Thank you, you too.
Sandy Gra, I don't believe she's here. Lisa Lannan, who I don't believe is here. Shirley Lee.
Diane.
Diane, sorry. Sheila Moore. Chad Spalding. Jimmy Darrell Spalding. David Thompson. Kathy Jo Underwood, who I know is not here. Martha Willard and Alice Young. I don't believe any of them are here. So congratulations, you all. Thank you for your many years of service to Marion County schools. And the next group we have are our perfect attendants for the year. So we have Dennis Asher. Steve Babic. Erin Bitten. Caroline Cobb. Kim Ford. Stacy Munger. Joseph Tungit. Jessica Veach and Kelly Wise. I see you all. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Let's get our picture photo, Kelly. Perfect attendance is a big deal, we need a picture.
Absolutely.
Next, we want to recognize our WKU Distinguished Educator Awards. And the first one we have is Carrie Thompson. John Christopher. Congratulations. And then Ms. Kelly Allen. Thank you all, congratulations.
Moving on to item 3C for public comment. We don't have anyone signed up, so item 3D is our superintendent report. Mr. Brady?
All right, lots more good news to share. Yeah, so, yeah, they pointed out it's a great picture. So recently, we held our UC Spalding graduation on Friday, May 24th. And our Marion County High School celebrated its graduates on Saturday, May 25th. So every year when they take this picture, I just absolutely love it. This is what we do as a school district, and we are very proud of our graduates and wish them much success. So facilities, Ms. Farmer? So she sent me a text earlier, and I haven't told this story. She said, "Oh, my goodness, I can now see out of our windows." She did not know I was gonna put this on the superintendent report. But I just want you all to look at the bottom pane of what the windows at Marion Middle looked like and the top two panes that have now been replaced and what a difference it makes. So needless to say, Ms. Farmer and the staff at Marion County Middle School are very appreciative of the new windows and what a tremendous difference that it's gonna make. So she didn't know her text was gonna end up on the report, but it's gonna be a remarkable difference at Marion Middle. So a couple of peak moments to share. So we had recently, and you've probably seen the videos on Facebook, but Molly Bedley at Glasscock Elementary, Lisa Minor at Marion County United Academy were recently named as the Marion County Public Schools Student Ambassador's Teacher of the Year. So you can see some pictures there. And I had the good fortune of driving the students around to give those awards, and man, what a great day that was. So just, again, a good opportunity for both our students and our staff. So congratulations to them. Continuing on, Marion County Middle School students recently raised $443.75 through a penny war which was donated to the Marion County Animal Shelter. So what a neat thing that that was. And of course, Citizens National Bank helped carry in and count the coins. Students at the Area Technology Center recently competed in the Skills USA State Competition, and they always do a great job with that. But we had Logan Harden, welding sculpture, first place. PJ Lannan, technical drafting, first place. Joseph Hickey, technical drafting, third place. And then Logan Harden and PJ Lannan will also go on to the national competition in Atlanta. Ms. McCray, do you want to say anything about that?
They're just fascinating students. Children call PJ's when we recognize them.
Yes, absolutely.
They're on their way into June, and we'll hopefully bring back some information about next.
Awesome, so hopefully we'll have some more good news.
I hope so.
I wish.
We had one more show up.
Okay, awesome. Sure, absolutely.
Yes, this is Leila Falwell, and she breached the 95th percentile in two areas.
Awesome, congratulations. So just wanted to point out, Mr. Sweet's landscape class recently helped freshen the central office up. If you've been around the central office in recent years, all the landscaping had pretty much died. So Mr. Sweet's class actually took that on as a project-based learning opportunity and helped to research plants and design what the landscaping would look like. And they actually came over and did a plan and went and got the plants and planted those for us. So the central office looks a lot better since they did some work around it. So thanks to Mr. Sweet and his class for doing that work and for doing that as a project. The Marion County High School Girls Track recently competed at the state competition. We had Grace Mattingly, 100-meter hurdle, 11th in the state. Carly Spalding, 1,600-meter hurdles, that's a mouthful, 10th in the state. And then the school record holder in the event, Jenna Bland, Deja Francisco, Talia Hall, and Mackenzie Green, the 4x200-meter relay, 22nd in the state. So congratulations to those students as well. Our Marion County Public Schools Summer Camps are well underway. And among the camps is the Life Skills Camp at Marion County High School, which covers skills such as sewing, CPR, and automotive repair. Just this week, we had a helicopter land and emergency vehicles here. So just, again, a good learning opportunity for our students this summer. The summer feeding program is operating at summer camps in the Marion County United Academy and is a daily meal pickup site. And starting June 12th, the district will distribute bulk meal packages once per week. So if you recall, a couple of months ago, we talked about that, you know, we're now unable to do both summer camp feeding and the bulk feeding. We can't do that at the same time. So we tried to concentrate our summer programs together so that we could provide additional bulk feeding, which is, again, will start June 12th. And then Ms. Wheeler is here, somewhere I saw her, but there she is, over there in the guest chair. So our public school nutrition director, Jennifer Wheeler, was recently elected to the Kentucky School Nutrition Association as their vice president. So congratulations to Ms. Wheeler.
Any questions?
Comment, I love the summer thing on the CPR and the cars. I could've used the automotive.
Probably me too.
I still do not know how to change a tire, so.
Life skills for sure. Moving on to item 3E is our attendance and enrollment report.
Good evening. So for our enrollment, as of the last day of school, Calfree Elementary finished the year with 208 students, and then if you include the 17 preschoolers, for a total of 225. Glasscock had 429 students with 33 preschoolers, for a total of 462. Lebanon Elementary finished with 308 and 23 preschoolers, for 328. West Marion had 354 students, 35 preschoolers, for a total of 389. Marion County Middle finished the school year with 402 students, and the United Academy with 471. Marion County High School finished the year out with 663 students, and QC Spalding with 169, for a total of 3,109 students. Our monthly attendance, as you can see, with April, May, increased and improved. We finished out the year in May with 93.98 percent.
That is self-celebration, because we haven't been close to 94 in several years, so.
So for the slide is the year-to-date. So for the total, it was 93.07. So much better. For the year, it was in the green. There were a couple rough patches whenever everybody was sick, but it finally improved. You'll notice the last four days of school, they are not red or green. It's because we went to school four more days than what we did the prior year, so there wasn't a comparison. We completed 174 days of instruction. There are zero days remaining. We had four NTI days and four makeup days for the school year. We had 152 homeschool students. And as of re-districting, our addresses with school boundaries, it's uploaded in Infinite Campus now. Our middle school welcome letters will be sent home soon. And the elementary draft boundary lines have been created. Do you have any questions for me?
All right, moving on to item 3F is our finance report. Scott?
Well, looking at the month of May, coming in, everything's still pretty much steady. Through the revenues, what we've been all year long. Of course, the biggest one, as we continue to talk about, is the interest is over $600,000. That's a huge, huge deal overall. And then getting to others, basically inflated because of our stolen insurance claim from last year. So overall, we're up about $862,000 in revenue. Going down, expenditures, they again are reflective of what the first 10 months have been. The biggest thing has changed this month, over this time last year, is you sit at $374,000 in the top one, our instruction. We spent about $250,000 out of general fund for software going forward for next year that had been paid for us, so that we talked about in the budget work session. So we've already paid for that, and we're continuing to work on that. So we're working toward closing up the fiscal year and this last month. And we presented you all a closed balance, we're still at the budget work session, talking about close, for about $11 million, I think we're still on track with that. And the other thing on there is we still transportation. While we have been running good, because these have been down, we actually received a bus, as you all seen, the air-conditioned bus, we paid for that. So that's the difference why that's changed this month. I'll find out the trend data there, it's kind of a high level. If you look at the very bottom line, the grand total last year, this time, was at 16.6, and this year was 16.5. So we've been, again, trying to continue to be efficient, right, or try to be efficient, so.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item four. I need a motion on item 4A, please.
Make a motion to consider approval of update fiscal year 2025 certified appeals panel.
I'll second.
Any questions about this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 4B is acknowledgement of the first reading for the 2024 policy update number 47, procedure update number 28, and that is so acknowledged. I need a motion on item 4C, please.
Move to consider approval of the 24-25 student code of conduct.
Second. Any substantive changes here?
No, nothing major. So we did, as we did last year, have our board attorney review our student code of conduct, just to make sure that we're in compliance and doing things the right way. So he did have a couple of recommendations. Again, nothing significant, just including some language to actually define what certain items were, you know, hazing, some things like that. He also did recommend that we add a statement that just says that this is the code of conduct, even if a student or parent didn't sign, that they acknowledge receiving it. You know, it is our code of conduct. So again, those are pretty much the only major changes. Just, again, some cleaning up and some, really, definitions more so than anything.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5A.
Make a motion to consider approval of school year 24-25 fees for software and menu support services for $12,267.
Second.
Questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item 5B?
Make a motion to consider approval of childcare food program meal service agreements.
Second. And these are the agreements that cover, so the West Main Head Start and Lebanon Head Start.
They do, so you provide meals and they reimburse us for that.
I think that's a great partnership with Community Action and the program that they provide. It just makes sure that kids are getting good food when they're at school.
Absolutely.
Wonderful partnership.
If it's coming from Marion County Public Schools, it's good food.
That's right.
Right, Jennifer?
We try.
Absolutely. I've heard too many good things to disagree with that one. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item 5C?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to consider approval of revised job description for educational interpreter 2, attachment 2.
I'll second. Questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5D?
I'll move to consider approval of fiscal year 25 memorandum of agreement with Kentucky Department of Education for Daniel Lockwood and Sierra Wheatley.
Second. I'm glad that we maintain these two excellent people. I think they've served on our staff in the past, and so it's really great to have them back as part of this partnership, so. Exciting, man. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item 5E? I'll make a motion to consider approval of the 24-25 Johnson Control Fire Protection Agreement in the amount of $30,108.25. I'll second. Any questions here? All in favor? I need a motion on item 5F?
Well, I'll move to consider approval of the annual contract with Micro Analytics for semi-annual environmental compliance inspections and record management.
Second. Any questions here? It's a mouthful. Do you want to talk about what the...
Yeah, so what that is, is that's our asbestos. They help us with asbestos to maintain that. And I'm pleased to report that we are really working closely in trying to become an asbestos-free district. So we're actually, it started this week during an asbestos abatement at the fitness center. And it's my understanding that once that is complete, this entire campus will be asbestos-free. So again, you know, if we get a new LES, we're getting very close to being an asbestos-free district.
In the future, if we become asbestos-free, will we still maintain this relationship?
We wouldn't. So it's actually gone down every year because we're inching closer to being asbestos-free.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5G?
Make a motion to consider approval of fiscal year 25 fidelity bond for board treasurer in accordance with KDE regulations.
Second.
Any questions here? All in favor? Need a motion on item 5H?
Make a motion to consider approval of bond of depositories pledge of collateral with Citizens National Bank for 2024-25.
Second. I know we have a couple of ways that we work with Citizens. What is this one specifically?
So this is a bond of depositories. So with any of our deposits, we come in for any general fund, construction funds we deposit there and return to the state, make sure it's spelled, the FDIC's $250,000. They gotta show that they have the money to back our deposits. So this is the format that the state requires. They provide me a list or report of collateral, the match is what our largest deposit of the year is to make sure they can back it up in the event.
And I believe that number's 42 million.
It's double 40 million, yes.
Any other questions? All in favor? Need a motion for item 5A?
Make a motion to consider approval of Cumberland Family Medical Center's school-based satellite clinic agreement for 24-25.
Second. Any questions here?
So no real significant changes there this year. It's a $70,910.17, which is very much in line with what it has been. It's 20% of the overall cost.
All in favor? I need a motion for item 5J?
Motion to consider approval memorandum of agreement with the City of Lebanon for two school resource officers for 24-25.
Second. Any questions here?
Appreciate the City of Lebanon working with us. The relationship we've built with them.
All in favor? I need a motion on item 5K?
Make a motion to consider approval of contract with Compass Security Solutions for Compass Secure Campus in the amount of $29,015.
I will second.
Questions here? I'm just, I hope we never have to use the functionality, but I'm glad that we have it in the event that we do. All in favor? Need a motion on item 5L?
Well, I'll move to consider approval to declare used Marion County High School boys' basketball uniforms surplus and the proceeds for the sale of these items to the Marion County High School.
Any questions here? All in favor? Need a motion on item 5M?
Make a motion to consider approval payout number 14 to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of $810,133.09 for work performed and $189,936.95 to vendors for materials on the new Calfree Elementary School, BG number 22-052.
Second. All in favor? Need a motion on item 5N?
Well, I'll move to consider approval of payout number three to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of $76,449 for work performed on the Glasscock Elementary Masonry and Window Replacement Project, BG number 24-122. on the Glasscock Elementary Masonry and Window Replacement Project, BG number 24-122.
I will second.
All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item 5O?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of pay-up location number two and associated DOPs from Central Kentucky Glass in the total amount of $75,264 for the Marion County Middle partial window glazing replacement, BG 24-120.
All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item 5P?
Make a motion to consider approval of the initial BG1 for guaranteed, or guaranteed energy savings contract.
Second. I'm going to talk a little bit about this.
Sure. So the engineer CPA has a scheduling conflict, we moved. But so basically, what we're looking at doing is replacing all the HVAC heating units in the classrooms in the original park at Marion County Middle School, as well as there's three rooftop units that are very fresh air in the building. They're all 1998, so they're 26 years old. The initial expectancy is about 20 years on life cycle for those. We're on borrowed time. That is our last big building we've yet to replace, the HVAC. If you recall, too, the one we did a couple of years ago, we did not, we did some alternates, and we did not take the alternate for the air handlers on Glasscock's route. So we're looking to put those in there as well. There's five total over there, we try to get the least, the ones that are in the part, the older part of the building, and give the other ones as an alternate, they were O2 models, to see if we can make it work. And this will be funded all by cash project, that's some cash reserve that we have identified for a future BG1. So there won't be any bonding or anything like that, associates, it's all cash.
Other questions for Scott on this? All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item 5Q?
I'll move to consider approval of 2024-25 Houchens Insurance Group for property, general liability, inland marine, crime, vehicle, Arizona Mission, SM&amp;M, law enforcement, workers' compensation, cyber liability, and umbrella for $635,746.46.
Second. Let's see, our gentleman from Houchens?
Joe Stewart. Thank you. First and foremost, let me just say, we really appreciate the continued trust, and forgive me for my voice, continued trust and support of the Houchens Insurance Group. My name is Joe Stewart, I'm the president of the Houchens Insurance Group, Northern Region. I'm part of the education division, but also the commercial division. I'm originally from and live in Hardin County, in Lisbitown, Eetown, we call it. And we have worked with Scott and his team for, my goodness, many, many years, haven't we, Scott? And it's been, it's been a great relationship, and it's not something we take for granted. We, we do have a large footprint in the school industry throughout Kentucky. We are now, I always tell people, for a bunch of old country boys, we, we are now, I think, up over half of the public schools that we represent in the state of Kentucky. Doesn't include some of the universities and colleges that we do, and I can always use Campbell's University as an example of, of one of the universities, my alma mater, that I, that I went to and very proud of. But we do appreciate it. The, the insurance industry has definitely changed, as you all know, especially in the last probably three to four years. From liability, the nuclear verdicts and settlements have just skyrocketed as far as claims that are being settled. And I don't have to tell you all about the property claims and what's gone on in Kentucky the last three to four years between straight-line winds, tornadoes, what'd they call that one in December, the polar freeze, I think it was, one Christmas weekend here about three years ago. And that, that has continued to go up between labor and material shortages. So we do everything that we can to negotiate and leverage our relationship with the, the school carriers. There's not many. We represent them all. And, and anytime there's a new one that's coming into Kentucky, we usually get a phone call, because they know the footprint we have, and we want to protect our schools. Many of my family are retired teachers, so it's very dear, near and dear to my heart personally. But we do that. And when we started our conversations back in, in January on the renewals, because we, we worked this business, as Scott knows, 12 months out of the year. I mean, we don't do it just once a year. We have certain people dedicated to the schools throughout Kentucky. And the, the renewal that came in, we were, never want to see an increase, we understand that. But we try to push that down, because most of the school markets were trying to get, they were trying to get anywhere from 25, 30, and more percent. We were able to push that down. And it's because of, of the relationship and because of people like Scott and his team that really work with us. So we do appreciate it, be happy to answer any questions that you have, and at this point.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor? Aye. Item 5R is acknowledgement of field trips, so acknowledged. I need a motion on item 6?
I'll make a motion to approve the student learning and support consent items A through O.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on any of these? Okay, all in favor? Moving on to item 7, acknowledgement of personnel actions, so acknowledged. And I need a motion on item 8.
Item 8, it is such an honor for me to move that we adjourn this meeting.
All in favor?